I will call the 7:30 Special City Council Meeting to order. It's a special city council meeting, a Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting, and also the Planning Commission, I believe, was invited as well. Maybe not. I know they're here later. And ask the, I'm sorry, ask the staff to call, roll call for the HRA.
HRA Chair Sandahl.
Here.
Commissioner Gotal.
Here.
Commissioner Quam.
Here.
Commissioner Rubenstein. Commissioner Gepner.
Here.
I'd like the roll call for the City Council, please.
Mayor Gotal.
Here.
Councilmember Sandahl.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Rogie.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, and I will turn it over to Mr. Davich.
Thank you, Chair Sandahl, members of the HRA and the City Council. Tonight's, tonight's meeting was to deal with two specific aspects that dealt with sale of property. One was a sale of property, of city property, the other was sale of Housing and Redevelopment Authority property. From the time that the agenda was put together and sent out and the meetings posted, we were made aware that Mr. Clark was withdrawing the proposal that would have been acted on this evening. So in essence, the two items, item one and two, that sit on this agenda really are not in front of you for consideration if the proposal has been withdrawn. I understand, if I'm correct, that Mr. Clark would want to make a comment about why this was being withdrawn, but even before we get to that, I'm going to ask, first of all, we have City Attorney Karine Heine here, and also the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Julie Eddington. And I'm going to ask Karine to just make a comment before we start the meeting because of the unusual situation where we have a meeting that was to deal with two specific items that are now no longer on the agenda, and how we might proceed at that point, Karine.
Well, the two items, just for the public, the two items that are on the agenda, one was consideration of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing sale of city property to Ron Clark Construction &amp; Design, and the second was consideration of a motion directing staff to schedule a public hearing to consider the sale of the former Gleason's mortuary site to Ron Clark Construction &amp; Design. The first would have been an action to be taken by the City Council, and the second an action to be taken by the HRA. I believe it was Friday that we were informed that Ron Clark is withdrawing his land use applications, and also, I think they'll explain why they withdrew their applications, but my understanding is that they intend to sort of go back to the drawing board and then resubmit. And then, in relation to that, because at this point, we don't know whether the new application will involve the sale of these properties, there isn't anything to act on tonight. We do not have a formal offer for the purchase of either property, and therefore, there's nothing for the council to act upon tonight. In addition, we have advised Ron Clark that, of course, due to the withdrawal of his application, that this item will be pulled from the Planning Commission meeting scheduled for April 23rd. So it's also going to be pulled off of that agenda, and I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. And then I guess I don't have anything further, but if Mr. Clark or his team would like to make a comment.
Please. And if I may, just before we have Mr. Clark come forward, I did have one thing I forgot to read into the record. I'm noting for the record that members of the City Council, HRA, and Planning Commission have all received a copy of an email from the following person regarding the matter stated below, which will be included in the record, and it's Barry LeBlanc on Pillsbury Commons. And if you would state your name and address and your capacity.
Make sure that green light's on, too, so we hear you.
Yes, good evening. My name is James Susag. I'm land use counsel for Ron Clark Construction &amp; Design. I'm with the Larkin Hoffman Firm, which is located at 7900 Xerxes Avenue South in Bloomington. And it's a privilege and honor to be before this group this evening. As some of you may be aware, my father served on the HRA for many years. He also served on the City Council. He also served on the Planning Commission. I myself have deep roots in the city of Richfield, having been raised here, having gone to school here. My father lives here. My oldest son attends school in Richfield. So it's my hometown in all respects, and it's a privilege and honor to be here before you this evening. Just to confirm what the City Attorney says, yes, we are withdrawing our land use application, and I want to confirm that for purposes of the record. We want to submit a plan that the city staff, the city officials, and the community is going to support. So we're going to go back to our plan. We're going to revise it, and we're going to make it complete in all respects, and we're going to make it something that we think everyone can support and be proud of. And we realized after speaking with the city staff later in the week after the meeting last week that there wasn't critical support for that plan. And so we're going to go back and get a plan that does have that support and bring it to you at the upcoming meetings. And in terms of timing, we hope to have that back to the city in terms of its application within a week, and then to start the process from there. So we are going to work very diligently and are trying to set up a meeting with staff and council to go through that, and we'll be doing that hopefully yet this week. I just want to very briefly preview for everyone our process going forward. There's been a lot of questions asked about this, this project. And last week at the work session, I took very careful notes and listened very carefully to the comments that you all made, members of the Planning Commission made, comments that members of the, the community made. In terms of the process, what I heard was, was that Ron Clark is moving the target. The newspaper article I read that followed the meeting from last week said, called it "The Ever-Evolving Design Plans." And I just want to briefly comment on that. First of all, there have been changes to the project, there have been changes to the application. And I would submit that that's very typical, very typical, not very atypical, but very typical of a municipal approvals project. There's nothing, there's no subterfuge, there's no pretext here. We're trying to get a plan, as I said, that will meet with your approval, meet with the community, have community support. That's all we're trying to do in this process. And so this idea that we're changing plans is nothing more than that, that we're trying to make sure that we've got that critical support. We are, as I said, we're going to work hard on that and get that back to the city very, very quickly. There was also, so that's the procedure. I want to briefly address some of the substantive things that were said. And again, we would welcome the input of staff, we would welcome the input of the community members and the city officials in this regard. But our future presentations to these boards will be very straightforward. We are going to look you in the eye, and we're going to tell you about our project. What I heard last week was, why did it change from what I would describe as a market rate to affordable housing? We'll address that. I'm not going to address it tonight, but we'll address that. You know, why an 80/20 mix, that I think Councilmember Rogie mentioned, doesn't work from a market perspective? We will address that. Why single-family homes or for-sale townhomes do not work at this site? We're going to address that. There was a discussion about, is this just a Phase 1, and is there going to be a Phase 2? I can answer the question very succinctly, there's only going to be one phase, but again, we'll address that. We're going to address, from a design, features, amenity perspective, this project as it compares to other projects and other existing apartments in the city of Richfield. We're going to compare it from a rents perspective to other Richfield complexes, and look at why this is called affordable housing. And keep in mind, it's called affordable housing because of the financing that underlies the construction of the project itself, not because of the people that are going to live there, are going to be handed a check from the government to hand to the management company to pay the rent. But we're going to explain that so everyone can understand exactly what we mean by affordable housing, what it means in this context and in this project. We're going to talk about property values. That's an issue that's been raised, we're going to talk about it. We're going to talk about crime issues. That's an issue that's going to be raised, that's an issue we're going to address. We're going to talk about the PUD process, because we think that protects not only the city, but also the applicant, and not just now, but in the future. And we're going to talk about the benefits, we think, of this project to what is admittedly, if you drove through the site, it's a blighted site, it's contaminated, and we don't know the extent of that contamination, but it's contaminated, and why this project fits in that area, and why it's going to incorporate the features and amenities that existing apartment complexes in the city of Richfield simply do not have. In a few minutes, we're going to hear about the rental housing study. I was, I pulled that off the Internet earlier today, and right on page five, it said, "We're lacking two and three bedroom units, we're lacking units with modern amenities, and we're lacking units appropriate for families." And then the other one was senior housing. So there are four things listed in the executive summary, and then again on page 56 of that survey, or that study, about what Richfield is lacking. They call it the gap analysis. What's, what's, what's the gap? Well, this project, folks, is going to fulfill three of those right away. And again, we'll address that through the process. So I appreciate your, giving me a few minutes to address you this, this evening. Again, it's been a privilege and honor. Unless there's questions, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Susag.
Steve, do you want to raise the issue now?
If it's, if Karine does, Karine doesn't, if he wants to add something. Mr. Davich? Mr. Quam is wondering if this is an appropriate point for him to raise his question again?
Yes, it would be. I don't know, was there one more thing you wanted to mention, Karine, before we go on?
Yes, there was, related to the second item, which was the motion directing staff to schedule a public hearing. Because there is no offer at this time, this is not an appropriate item. There's nothing for, for the HRA to do at this point, but it would be the staff's intention, if a definite offer is received prior to the deadline for publication, that the staff, and this would not be atypical from other instances, the staff would publish that public hearing so that the HRA could consider a proposed sale and take public comment at a public hearing at the regular May meeting. So that would be the staff's intention, again, if and only if a definite offer for the purchase of the property is received in time to meet publication deadlines.
Thank you.
I'm chair.
Yes, Mr. Quam?
Doesn't that take the discretion away from the HRA to determine whether or not they wish to schedule a public hearing?
Mr. Commissioner, Julie Eddington with Kennedy and Graven. There's nothing in the statute that requires the HRA call for a public hearing. Traditionally, staff has made the decision to schedule those public hearings. So it is historically been the staff that has called those public hearings on your behalf.
Mr. Quam?
We have this as an agenda item tonight, and staff has recommended against our voting for that on the basis of several reasons that are given in the staff report. How do you determine whether or not those are complied with without bringing them before the HRA?
Staff's determination this evening to, to remove the item from your agenda is a little different than what's in the staff report, mostly because the, the application for land use are, have been withdrawn, and there is no offer on the table to purchase the property, and it would be premature for the HRA to act this evening, even to call the public hearing. I think staff's intention would be that if a true purchase offer comes from Mr. Clark and along with the proper land use applications, that the staff would then schedule a public hearing for the next HRA meeting, if the timelines allowed for that, and if they thought it was a, an appropriate plan to move forward with.
City manager?
Yeah. Mr. Quam, members of the HRA, I know, I, that is the way it's historically been done. I suspect if, if the HRA feels strongly that they should make that decision and not staff, that's your prerogative to do so. And if the HRA were to say to us, no, you need to, we want to decide as to whether or not we schedule a public hearing on that, I guess I don't want to put attorneys on the spot, but it would seem to me that is, that's certainly a way we could proceed with this, and putting that authority back with the, with the policymakers rather than administration.
Absolutely. Right. If I may, though, the HRA does have a preliminary agreement that requires the HRA to operate in good faith, and in this case, if there were an offer for the purchase of the property, it would be within the HRA's exercise of good faith to call for that public hearing, and then it certainly doesn't hurt anything. You still have the ability to say no if the purchase is not appropriate, but it does further that. This is on the agenda tonight because the staff, and based on the staff's own review of the proposal for the property, which would have let the property basically sit empty, that that was not consistent with any HRA plans for that area, and basically, there wasn't a reason to draw it out any further, and they felt that it was appropriate, given that that was their recommendation, and given comments that were made at the last joint meeting, that that seemed to have some, there was, there was some sentiment among the members of the HRA in their thinking, that it seemed appropriate to bring it to the HRA and just have them make the decision now. We don't know now what the proposal will be, we don't know whether it is going to be contrary to any plan, and so we would just go forward, follow the normal process, publish it for a public hearing, and then the HRA would have the opportunity to take public comment and make a decision at that time. I'm chair.
Mr. Quam?
So what we had before was staff determining that it probably wasn't appropriate for sale for the use they were, they were proposing, and they were looking for confirmation from the HRA. Is that?
Yes, agreement.
Okay.
Yes.
So could we assume that if they come back and ask us to sell the land for vacant, for a vacant lot in a driveway again, you would bring that back to us?
It will come back to the HRA, probably at a public hearing, but again, you would not be prevented from determining that that is not how you want to use HRA property.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have, I have some questions, too, and more for clarification, because we have a lot of folks here. We have a preliminary agreement with them, and there's probably a timetable on that, and can somebody talk to us about the timetable on the preliminary agreement, and then also discuss about all these 60-day clocks that keep stopping and starting, and what that means? I think a lot of people would probably like to hear what that's about.
If I could address the second one.
Okay.
The clock has definitely stopped. The application has been withdrawn. There is no application pending before the city, and they have been informed, the developer's been informed, that they need to resubmit, and that's going to start the 60-day clock all over again.
For just the application piece?
For the land use applications, that's what the 60-day clock, what we refer to as the 60-day clock applies to the land use applications.
The HRA's preliminary agreement with Mr. Clark has a 15-month period with an automatic six-month extension. That document was executed on May 16th, 2011, so it will last until approximately February 16th, 2013.
Unless it's released for other reasons or something of that sort?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Star?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make the point on the 60-day clock crystal clear, that when the applicant mentioned withdrawing their application, I made it clear to them that any resubmit will be considered a brand-new application. So there's, there's no talk of the clock being paused. The clock would restart at day zero with the new application. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
May I?
Yes, Mr. Quam.
Just to follow up on the discussion about the preliminary agreement and the timeframe during which we need to be parties to that, there is a provision that says that the, the HRA could terminate if it determines in good faith that the applicant is not diligently pursuing the project. We've had two applications so far. We've done all the things we are supposed to do to deal with those applications, and here we are tonight, all dressed up with no place to go, because, again, the application has been withdrawn. At some point, is it not reasonable for us to question or make a decision in good faith that the application is not being pursued diligently?
You are correct. The preliminary agreement does, in the termination section, say that the HRA can terminate if they feel that the, the developer is not being diligent with the process.
I don't think I'm prepared to make that motion tonight, because I've heard Mr. Susag tell us that he's going to have something in another week, and I think, though, that I hope they hear what I'm asking, because I think if we come to another situation where the application comes in, gets pulled again, or doesn't, or gets changed again, I probably will be making the motion that we terminate this agreement.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question. If the application is brought back in a week, what, what's the time sequence? I think in the past, we've obviously jumped through hoops with other developers, but we haven't done that. I'm, I'd like to know, we got a document a couple of weeks ago, where it wrote right in the memo that information, enough information wasn't supplied to us, and we had that debate here. So what's our expectation of what your staff is going to make them do as far as Planning Commission having 28 days' notice, that type of stuff, and any other notices we have that other developers have had to follow?
The May Planning Commission meeting would normally be scheduled for May 28th, which is Memorial Day. So I'm, the Planning Commission hasn't acted to reschedule that meeting, but typically it would then move to May 29th, Tuesday, May 29th. So to get an application 28 days in advance, that would mean that all land use applications, whether it's for this project or for any other project, would be due on May 1st. Once staff receives the application on May 1st, we would have a, we would have a 15-day period to make sure that that planning application is complete. If we find that for some reason it's incomplete during that 15 days, we would send them a letter saying, "Your planning application is incomplete, and the 60-day clock has, has paused until you provide all of the information necessary to make it complete." Usually, there's a little bit of wiggle room for them to provide that information, maybe three or four, five days, and still keep on the, that month's schedule. We've built in time for a little bit. But anything longer than about five days, and it makes it impossible to get the information in time to get it into the packets for the Planning Commission for May, so it would, it would then go to June. Assuming that their application is complete to begin with, that staff finds it's complete, obviously, it would go on the, the May meeting, and the, the 60-day clock would continue to run. And then it would go from the May 29th Planning Commission meeting to the, typically, to the first City Council meeting in June, and I don't know the date of that offhand, but it's, it would be the second Tuesday in June, would be the typical process.
And the HRA?
Land use applications do not go to the HRA. This is a little different, of course, because there's a, a component of purchasing the property, and I can tell you that, that my staff, and I'll throw out kudos to Ms. Christine Costello, has put together a myriad number of schedules on this project, and, you know, since the time that we received the withdrawal of the application on, on Friday afternoon at about 4 o'clock, until today, we have not revised the latest schedule, in part because we wanted to hear what you had to say, in part because we know that the developer wants to meet with staff this week. So we'll, we'll work on putting that schedule back together again and letting you know as quickly as we can.
And then will the, will the, the public hearing and the vote occur on the same night?
You know, I, the way it was scheduled before, that's the way it was shown, but that doesn't mean that's what the policymakers have to do. That's something you can choose to do. So you can choose on the, on the night.
I can tell you, I would personally would want to make sure that it's not the same night. I would like to be able to take the information we get that night and actually go think about it.
Right, and that's completely at the council and HRA's discretion to do so.
Mr. Fitz Henry?
Thank you. My question is, if they're going to meet with staff, these things seem to happen after our Thursday night publication, if you want to call it that, where the staff report comes out, and then we got the withdrawal. If they're going to meet with staff, can staff strongly advise them on what your recommendation might be on that proposal, so that they know before it gets published Thursday in our, you know, packets, what the flavor of that meeting would be?
Well, Councilmember Fitz Henry, we'll do our best. This is a complex thing, and, you know, just as an example, there are, there were some changes that they were making to the, to their site design, that they were making in order to address neighborhood concerns. An example would be not having walk-ups, not having walk-ups on Pillsbury Avenue. That portion of it, they were, as I said, doing to kind of appease the neighborhood concerns. That was something staff thought was actually, from a pure planning perspective, getting further away from what the comprehensive plan and planning principles dictate. So, so many of these things are even at odds with one another, so I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure that they can, at this point in time, put a proposal together that is going to make everybody happy in all respects, including staff, but we will do our best to, to communicate to them what our expectations are.
Thank you.
No more questions? I guess we'll adjourn the HRA meeting, then.
Seeing any other questions, Council? Seeing no further action?
Seeing any other questions, council? Seeing no further action?
Well, I thought maybe there'd be something down there. I just want to be sure that everybody understands that I think that we are really here tonight, because, and I don't know how you're going to deal with this, because you know what you're going to do, I'm sure by now. But, you know, there's a big concern about density, and how you planned on attacking density was by, in effect, destroying some of our property, by buying land you didn't want, giving it back. All I can say is that's, I don't think that's going to fly anymore, and I think, I think you understand that. I hope you do. You came here in, three years ago next month. That's how long we've been dealing with this property with you, which meant that nobody else could deal with it. And I don't know how you got caught up in the tax credits. We took your word that it was because the market wouldn't bear building townhomes. I think we now know that the market is changing. We got information the staff, the council did for sure, on the selling of properties now is up again. It's going in the right direction now. And I think you, you know, I was so supportive of you when you came here and wanted to build those townhomes, single-family owner-occupied. Density with townhomes, I was okay with. I don't know where everybody else is on this, but I think you should be looking at getting back to that, because you still have a density issue. And you also said you were going to have Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then you came back and told us you were going to leave two houses there, and that was going to be your market-rate housing. Those, that's the kind of things that you lost credibility with me with, and a number of other issues. So I hope you come back with something that you really know that we will at least really consider, and not just trying to find another way to get the rest of the land so you can make the density on the 70-unit apartment complex maybe legal. That's my biggest concern.
And if you want to address that, is that okay? We closed the HRA meeting, though. Have we not adjourned the HRA meeting?
We didn't vote on it.
No.
Okay. All right. Then go ahead.
Well, Chair Sandall, Mayor, Councilmember Rogie, let me address that specifically. Has there been changes to this plan from 2009 to where we stand here in 2012? Absolutely. Have there been ideas floated about that have changed? Absolutely. Absolutely. And we're not saying otherwise. Have there been discussions about other things that would go there, you know, different configurations of apartment buildings, townhomes, other-like uses? Absolutely. What we're looking at now is rental units. And again, as I mentioned, we will, we will discuss that at those meetings while we're doing it. But I don't want anyone, and Councilmember Rogie, I don't want you to think that we're trying to play hide the ball here, or that we're trying to move the target, as was discussed before. You know, we will talk about the market studies. We will talk about why we're doing it, and we will lay it on the table in front of you and tell you why we're doing that. But, you know, I went through the record here this afternoon, looked back at the historical stuff from 2009, 2010, 2011, and up to now, and yes, there was absolutely discussion about different sites. I would submit that that's, again, very typical in the land use process, that ideas get floated, things get discussed, things get changed, and this is not different than those processes. And I know you're thinking about this particular project, and I don't want you to think that that's something we're trying to do, that we're trying to say one thing and do another, because that's absolutely what we're not trying to do. And the reason why, when we heard on Thursday that staff was not going to support, that the plan was discussed at the work session, that's why we pulled it back. Pure and simple. And what we heard was, they didn't, they wanted to make better use of the land. And so the application you're going to receive is going to make use of the land. That's as simple as I can say it. And the reason why it was pulled back, the reason why we're not having the meetings tonight, so the plan you're going to see, the plan we're going to discuss with staff, the plan that we're going to discuss with city council, or city, the city attorney, is absolutely going to address those issues. That's the listening process that we've been going through. Thank you.
Any other comments after that? Well, then, if there's no further business before us, the HRA meeting stands adjourned.
No further business. The city council meeting stands adjourned. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm sure we'll see some of you again. Thank you. You can stay for the next meeting.